Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council for September 8th, 2025. We have a special introduction before we start the meeting tonight. So Chief, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here today to introduce, it's my privilege and pleasure to introduce our 54th sworn officer, and Harrison Riley. And I want to thank Council, I want to thank the city manager, and I want to thank the citizens. Because of the support from all of you, including the citizens, it's been able to allow us to get the additional officers and to get to the point where we are now, having our 54th officer, which is the most in the history of the city of Beaver Creek. So we're very proud of that, and I want to thank everybody for their support. Harrison graduated from the Beaver Creek High School in 2022 and Sinclair Community College in 2024 with an associate's degree in applied science. He decided to pursue a career in law enforcement and applied at Beaver Creek PD in December of 2024. While going through the hiring process, he enrolled in Clark State Police Academy in March of '25 and successfully graduated from the academy and passed his state exam in August. During the interview process, Harrison commented how he chose the Beaver Creek Police Department because he wants to serve and protect his hometown. He believes his personal values align with the department's standards and the mission statement. And in his application letter, Harrison said, "I believe serving the public as a Beaver Creek police officer would be rewarding, challenging, fulfilling, and an honor." Harrison has started the field training program, and upon completion, he'll be assigned to patrol under the supervision of a shift sergeant. So we're extremely excited to have Harrison onboard. It's obviously also exciting anytime we're able to hire a Beaver Creek graduate and just with the connection that he has to the city already, growing up and graduating from Beaver Creek. So we look forward to his long and successful career. And Harrison, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, absolutely. I want to thank you guys again for letting me have this kind of privilege to work for such a great city. I know that some of you I haven't met quite yet, but it's really an honor to be here. I mentioned this earlier, it feels like I won the lottery working for the city of Beaver Creek. It's absolutely amazing. And coming from, like, just living here my entire life, it's awesome to see the community grow, and I'm glad that I can be a part of that. So definitely look forward to making things good and doing my part as like a citizen here. And yeah, just really glad that I can make this happen, so.
Well, welcome. We're really glad you're here.
Appreciate it.
Chief, if I could add something?
Yes, sir.
I've known Harrison's parents and family for a long, long time. And his family and his brother, all dedicated to public service. And I know you're going to be an amazing officer, and I'm very, very glad you're here. So you had a good one.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Curran?
Here.
Councilmember Doer?
Here.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Littoral is absent. Councilmember Schwartz?
Here.
Vice Mayor Bales?
Here.
Mayor Adams?
Here.
Move to excuse Councilmember Littoral?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to excuse Councilman Littoral. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? I will turn it over to Councilon.
You all please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you'll remain standing for just a minute. You know, I've been doing a lot of personal reflection over the past week, and so it's kind of what prompted my remarks today. But I think it's our human nature to always be planning. We're planning for our next big steps in life, planning for retirement, overthinking our future. And while there's nothing wrong at all with planning, and we should be, we sometimes forget to live in the present. We forget that tomorrow isn't promised, and we forget just how fragile life can be. We don't have to tell the families of the children who were killed and injured in the Minneapolis shooting. We don't have to tell the families of those who were lost in the World Trade Center almost 24 years ago. I don't have to tell one of my sorority sisters who just yesterday lost her husband to melanoma at the age of 41, leaving behind her two young children. So tonight, let's just take a moment of silence to remind ourselves that we shouldn't get so caught up in planning for a future that may never come, that we forget to live in the moment today. And a message that I think transcends religion and politics, let us love each other fiercely, give each other grace, because we never know the battles that someone else is facing, and remember to live in the moment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Those are words to really think about. We have an agenda before us. Any additions, changes, corrections?
Move, we approve the agenda for tonight, Your Honor.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? We also have a set of minutes for August 25th, our regular meeting. Any changes, additions, corrections? Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from August 25, 2025. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Preschedule speaker, Miami University. Doctor, welcome.
Hi, everyone. Happy Monday evening. Thank you so much, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Municipal Council for having us this evening. My name is Dr. Sarah Larson. I'm an associate professor at Miami University in the Department of Political Science. In addition, I'm a research fellow with the Center for Public Management and Regional Affairs. I'm here today to lead a presentation on a report that has been completed and presented to the council entitled Municipal Income Tax Revenue Projections and Comparative Analysis. I would be remiss if I didn't highlight the importance of the entire team here, including many undergraduate students who gained valuable work experience by participating on this project. So I'd like to take a moment to have on the screen all researchers' associates and applaud and thank them for their work. In addition, I'd like to go over the roadmap for this evening for what we're going to be covering. First and foremost, we're going to be talking about the concept and public finance literature of revenue diversification. Then, second, we're going to be talking about the pros and cons of two different types of taxation, both income tax at the municipal level and property tax. And then finally, we're going to be talking about the modeling that was done in this analysis, which is synthetic modeling, talking about the assumptions, the goodness of its, and then the estimation of revenue. I want to give a bit of sort of context leading up to this study, and that's highlighting the fact that there are three municipalities in the state of Ohio that are currently operating without a municipal income tax. Municipal income tax in the state of Ohio is the main revenue driving force for municipalities. It's how they collect the revenue. There are three that currently do not have one, Beaver Creek, Cortland, and Bel Burke. And I want to highlight the disparities here between Beaver Creek and Cortland-Bel Burke in both population size as well as square miles. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to one of the two students that worked on this project to talk a little bit about the concept of revenue diversification.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Gracie Cribs, and I am a sophomore at Miami University, double majoring in public administration and economics. I am also a CPMRA research associate. I'm very excited to be able to discuss with you the concept of revenue diversification, specifically what it is and how it supports healthy fiscal systems. So to begin, revenue diversification is a technique that promotes revenue expansion by relying on multiple streams of revenue and avoiding an overreliance on a singular source. This concept has been extensively researched in the public administration literature. Revenue diversification is recommended for all municipalities to incorporate into their practices as it creates a healthier and more reliable fiscal system. Currently, Beaver Creek could increase revenue diversification as it receives 56.3% of its funding for city operations from property taxes, which then helps to qualify them for grants that make up an additional 14.8% of revenue. The following pie chart breaks down Beaver Creek's revenue by category. As mentioned, property tax accounts for 56.3% of Beaver Creek's funding for city operations and helps qualify for grants making up 14.8% of funding. Overall, this comes out to 71.1% of overall funding coming solely from property taxes. Revenue diversification is so important because no stream of revenue is entirely reliable, so it is crucial to have multiple options to depend on in case one of the sources does not perform as expected. Economic fluctuations can impact all sources of revenue at times, regardless of the revenue source. These guidelines apply to all municipalities as revenue diversification is a recommended practice for all to implement. Examples of municipal revenue sources that could be diversified include the following. Overall, the expansion of revenue creates more stability in a revenue collection system. Stability is especially important in these systems as there are natural fluctuations in the economy. It also provides the reliability of a steady flow of revenue, lessens the potential for tax revenue volatility, boosts economic growth, provides municipalities with greater autonomy during business cycle fluctuations, and helps municipalities to be more self-sufficient, relying less on grants and/or frequent ballot measures. The graphic pictured before you represents the business cycle from 1978 to 2024. The business cycle is best described as the expansion and contraction of an economy that occurs naturally over time. As we take a look at it, we can see the extreme fluctuations of the lines while the economy is expanding and contracting. Shaded in gray and denoted by arrows are the recessional periods. Since the beginning of this century, we have seen three separate economic recessions. The first was in 2001, followed by the Great Recession of 2008, and finally, the brief economic downturn in 2020 caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. As the business cycle is always changing, it is important that municipalities have stability in their revenue collection systems in order to withstand these natural periods. Revenue diversification helps provide economic stability amidst the ever-changing business cycle. We specifically looked at two studies conducted in the early 2000s focusing on the suburbs of Chicago. These studies are both beneficial because Beaver Creek is also a suburban municipality located right outside of a large city, Dayton. Both studies found a common trend of municipalities shifting away from relying solely on property taxes at the beginning of the century to implementing additional diversified revenue structures. They found that the diversified structures helped to increase revenue, but more importantly, increased fiscal stability. I also want to briefly cover some current state action and threats to property taxes relevant to this conversation. Recently, a grassroots organization, Citizens for Property Tax Reform, has been collecting signatures in order to place a citizen-led initiative aiming to abolish property taxes on the ballot next May. If passed, this could pose issues for municipalities operating and relying heavily on property tax revenue. We have also seen legislative action regarding this issue. In the recent House Bill 96, which is the fiscal year 26 and fiscal year 27 operating budget, legislators discussed and even passed many threats to property taxes within their bill, such as voting to allow the Board of County Commissioners to award up to a 2.5% owner occupancy credit and to grant individuals a double homestead without a reimbursement to local governments. Additional threats were line item vetoed by Governor DeWine. As we have discussed thus far, Beaver Creek could increase revenue diversification. Between fluctuating economies, legislation, policy revisions, and other unpredictable challenges, stability is highly important for all revenue structures. Revenue diversification incorporates multiple streams of revenue and serves to give a municipality several avenues for stabilizing its revenue streams. By expanding the sourcing of its revenue streams, Beaver Creek will become more stable and more financially proactive when changes do occur. This will also allow Beaver Creek to adequately support new infrastructure initiatives and to maintain operations. Revenue diversification plays a vital role in maintaining the health and stability of fiscal systems. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Now I would like to turn the floor over to Brooke to discuss the pros and cons of both property and income tax. Thank you.
Thank you, Gracie. My name is Brooke Smith, and I am a third-year undergraduate student at Miami University studying public administration and diplomacy. Today, I will be discussing the pros and cons of the income and property tax, along with addressing the value of revenue diversification. These recommendations are based on general research for all municipalities. Having an income tax can greatly expand the tax base, considering that the vast majority of people employed within Beaver Creek are non-residents. An income tax will capture the services used by non-residents and eliminate the problem of individuals benefiting without contributing. Those who use Beaver Creek's roads and services will have to pay an income tax to cover the costs, lessening the burden on Beaver Creek's residents in the process. Most likely, the addition of an income tax would not discourage businesses from remaining in the area. Not only would it be costly to relocate a business out of the city, but all surrounding municipalities also have an income tax. Income taxes are progressive in nature, meaning that higher wage earners pay more in taxes. Progressivity in taxation is central to reducing income inequality among residents by utilizing taxes from higher earners to fund programs for lower-income earners. At the same time, income taxes do have several cons. The progressivity of the income tax system can be problematic when the majority of employees make minimum wage and therefore don't pay a high rate of income tax. 2022 Census Bureau employment data shows that Beaver Creek had one of the highest numbers of employees that makes significantly over minimum wage, and that statistic is represented by the green line. The blue line, representing those between the bracket of $1,251 and $3,333 per month, trends upward over time. Having numerous individuals around minimum wage is a limitation for some municipalities in terms of collecting revenue, but this is not the case for Beaver Creek. Another limitation of the income tax is its volatility. Income tax revenue can fluctuate in response to economic conditions, resulting in surpluses and shortages. As presented earlier, recessions are guaranteed in the economic cycle. Uncertainty in revenue can make it difficult to plan a city budget properly. Further, the income tax code can be challenging to understand, especially given its intricacies. Tax code complexity disadvantages individuals who work remotely, those without a fixed residence, and small business owners who may not be aware of their local income tax obligations. Taxing income can reveal inequalities in resources and knowledge, and in some cases, cause evasive behaviors at the detriment to the local government. The other type of tax I will cover today is the property tax. Property taxes are beneficial in providing a more stable and less volatile source of revenue for local governments. Because of their stability, property taxes are typically used to fund essential community services, like public schools and fire departments, and invest in infrastructure. Deriving revenue from a stable tax source enables officials to plan their fund allocation in advance. Infrastructure funding is vital to ensuring that the city remains attractive to residents and non-residents alike. Like income taxes, property taxes also have some limitations. These taxes do not rise with inflation because property values are not appraised with inflation increases. Property tax revenue is expected to remain constant despite increases in the operational costs of cities and services. Property tax rates are based on home value, and how much home you can afford changes over time. High rates can price residents out, such as retirees, as they begin to rely on smaller sources of income. Those who take out a mortgage when buying their home have their property taxes billed to them by the mortgage company until their house is fully paid off. Receiving a separate property tax bill can pose a significant problem for people on a fixed income when they receive an unexpected bill. Another glaring issue with property taxes is that they remain with the property and not the owner. When the owner fails to pay the tax, it remains on the property and cannot be recouped by the city until it is sold. There have been recent examples of this case, such as the incidents in Gary, Indiana, and Detroit, Michigan. Reliance on multiple revenue sources through revenue diversification can mitigate the effects of economic changes on budget planning and funding provision. General examples of city services that could benefit from increased funding include improved roads, enhanced safety services, and public school improvements. Using the two taxes in tandem would also make Beaver Creek similar to other municipalities in the area, as all surrounding municipalities utilize both taxes. Additional taxation on residents is never appealing, although an income tax could appeal to a vast majority of residents who pay an income tax to another surrounding municipality. Diversifying revenue sources could increase the number of individuals and families moving into the area, as it could decrease property taxes. Diversifying allows for an expanded tax base by value capturing those who work in Beaver Creek but do not live there. For example, residents' tax dollars go towards snow removal and pothole repairs, which greatly benefit non-residents who work in the area but do not pay taxes for the service to take place. This can lessen the tax burden on Beaver Creek's residents while potentially increasing the local government's tax revenue. Now I will turn it over to Dr. Sarah Larson, who will discuss synthetic modeling.
Thank you for your time thus far. So to capture what potential revenue could be collected mathematically, the method that was used is something called the synthetic control method. And it allows for the mapping mathematically of a characteristic interest that is absent from a specific case. This was used to model the GDP in East Germany, had it not been controlled by the German domestic republic, and instead then one unified Germany at the end of World War II. It takes into account a series of municipalities and uses characteristics of interest that existing research tells us would be predictors of income tax revenue collection totals, and compares those over time. And so it compares the trends of the characteristics of interest of the target municipality groups, the subsets that are being fed into the model, against the municipality of interest, in this case Beaver Creek. And so it allows for a comparison and crafty model that gets at the best estimate of what would be the reality had this municipality experienced what was experienced by everyone else, in this case, the presence of an income tax. And so the goal here was to create an estimate of net revenue collections had Beaver Creek levied a municipal income tax over a 10-year time period of time, 2013 to 2023. And a series of characteristics of interest that the existing literature tells us would impact revenue collection is thrown into the model, including the unemployment rate, median income, average home price, education level, municipal net profits, and the major employers in the municipality. And so revenue collected through municipal income tax in synthetic Beaver Creek is sensitive to the seven municipalities that were used to create the synthetic municipality. So what was thrown into the model is sensitive to what comes out of the model. And so as a result of that, three different groupings were used. These groupings were used in part due to the unique nature of Beaver Creek, Ohio, being approximation to a major federal facility employer, in this case Wright-Patterson Air Force Base. And so Group A was chosen because of part their geographic proximity to Beaver Creek, suggesting they're experiencing similar characteristics in terms of socioeconomic status, and then also their location near Wright-Patterson. Group B was chosen again for their geographical location near a major federal employer in the state of Ohio, the Glenn Research Center, as well as a major municipality, in this case, Cleveland, Ohio. I was remiss, Group A was also chosen because it's near Dayton, Ohio. And then finally, Group C, proximity again to a major federal employer, in this case the Brickner Federal Building, and Columbus, Ohio. A couple key modeling assumptions were made that need to be noted here. First and foremost, there was a pre- and post-period that was put into the model to account for a major state-level policy change as it related to when withholdings were taken by employers and then remitted to municipalities. And so the pre-period was 2013 to 2017, post-period 2018 to 2023, to account for the fact that there was a timing difference in when employers were required to remit and then send to municipalities. The second key assumption here was that the income tax rate that Beaver Creek would be applying was a 1%. And then the third was that there would be a full credit of 100% of that 1% municipal income tax charged to residents who worked in other municipalities but resided in Beaver Creek. So there would be a full 100% credit applied if you worked in another municipality but lived in Beaver Creek and paid to another municipality. And so the key method of understanding how well these three different groups fit as creating a synthetic or fake Beaver Creek that experienced an income tax is something called the RMSPE, or the Root Mean Square Predicted Error. And the RMSPE gives a mathematical measurement of how much error there was in the prediction. And so in an ideal world, the percentage is smaller. A smaller percentage indicates a better overall fit. And so you can see from the slide above, Group B had the best fit by far of 2.94% error on average. And so using that Group B estimate, the 2024 estimate for Beaver Creek levying at a 1% rate was $19,654,286.65. And as I said, there is a margin of error here. There is error in the mathematical modeling. And so to account for that, the lower estimate is $19,764,50.62, and the upper estimate To put that into comparison with other municipalities in the region, you'll see here the sort of net collection rates had Beaver Creek been collecting in 2023, which is the most recent year that we have data as presented by the state, in comparison to a couple of key municipalities here, both in rate and net collections. So you can see that the lowest net collection would be received by the city of Beaver Creek. In addition, I would be remiss to talk about the percentage that would be paid by residents that live and work in the city of Beaver Creek versus those that are simply coming in to work in the city of Beaver Creek. And that is, according to the mathematical model, approximately 32%. And so a vast majority of this $19 million estimate would be paid for by individuals that are coming into the city of Beaver Creek for purposes of employment, but not living And so to conclude up, the existing academic literature tells us that revenue diversification helps foster both stability and a healthier economy overall. We highlighted some pros and cons of both the income tax and property tax. But the existing literature suggests that having multiple streams is beneficial, having multiple streams of revenue is beneficial. And then finally, to highlight the key findings of the synthetic modeling, a 1% rate of income taxation we collect between roughly $19 million and $20 million revenue in 2024 for the city of Beaver Creek. I would like to conclude our time and then open it up to any questions that perhaps the Mayor, the Vice Mayor have of us.
Oh, thank you very much. It would be more than just the Mayor and Vice Mayor, anyone else on council if they have any questions.
Real quick, to the students, that was a wonderful presentation. Very, very good. Thank you so much for that. If you could just remind us, what was the thesis you were working off of when you started this research? What was the goal and what was the project or the problem statement?
So the problem statement was what are best practices in municipal revenue collection, as well as if there was an income taxation at 1% in the city of Beaver Creek? What would that look like in terms of revenue estimate? And then how much volatility is there in that estimate in terms of error?
Dr. Larson, thank you very much for all of your work and to your students from the CPMR as well. Much appreciated. As noted in the weekend session in the summer, I really think the synthetic modeling is very creative, and thank you for your work. What robustness checks did you implement for the study?
So there were a variety of robustness checks. First, looking at visually inspecting pre- and post-trend lines. One way to check how good or poorly your synthetic model is, is to look at trend lines of the set of municipalities that are being used to create versus the synthetic itself. And so do those trend lines look similar or are they divergent in the pre-period? And so that was sort of a visual inspection. And then the second was that root mean square error that I talked about, which is more of a of a mathematical number to give on it.
Because my mind, and I've been trained on ordinarily squares, so forgive it, but my mind has gone to heteroschasticity. You know, when you increase wealth, your variance can increase at the top. And so does that apply to synthetic modeling? Okay.
No, in fact, you want the variables that go into the model to have, to be highly correlated actually helps with that because you're trying to capture as much underlying variation that explains what income tax revenue was collected by the municipalities in the groupings, those three groupings I talked about. The more information you feed it, the better. And so actually, in this case, it's a benefit, not a cost.
Sure, okay. That's good to know. With the probability P is less than .05, Group B is the only one that's statistically significant at that level. Groups A and B, A and C are not, although Group A is close to P is less than .1, which is not bad. It struck me that the number of municipalities included in each group may have an impact, given that there's more in Group B. Any comments on that or any conclusions?
Sure, no, yes. Having additional municipalities can increase the effectiveness and reduce the error rate of the modeling. The issue was wanting to identify municipalities based on those groupings that had a set number of federal employees that lived in each of their municipalities because that's a key determining factor for understanding how much income was actually going to be collected in the city of Beaver Creek. And so a threshold was set of 500 residents that worked for a federal agency in each of those municipalities. And so that's part of the reason why you're seeing this difference in terms of number, and that's driving sort of the difference there. Does that help clarify your question?
It really does. No, it's excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
And because we knew that that was going to be a key factor, I wanted to make sure I controlled for that.
Thank you very much. Chuck?
No comment at this time, Your Honor.
Thanks, Mayor. Just again, thank you for this presentation and thank the students for coming today and coming to our meeting this past summer. This has been incredibly insightful, so thank you for that. Thanks, Mayor.
Dr. Larson, I'm very impressed, and I want to thank you and the students as well. From the minute I saw you at OML last year, I knew that this was something that we really had to do. We've always had our assumptions, but to have it validated by Miami University and all of your research is very appreciated. And I can say that I don't think anybody likes paying taxes. But revenue diversification, from a municipal perspective, is smart. It avoids those ups and downs. And so, you know, I for one have been a proponent of an income tax. I will continue to be a proponent of an income tax. It makes sense, especially if I got your number right. Only 32% of our workforce lives and works in Beaver Creek. And 68% of them are coming into our community from other cities, presumably paying, a large amount of them paying income tax already. So I appreciate it. I think it's just another tool that we've got in our toolbox as we continue down the road to look for revenue. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you and your students for all the hard work because I know you put a lot into it, and we appreciate all of that. And as Vice Mayor Vail said, it's another tool to put in our toolbox that we can look at as we move forward. Because with everything that's happening, as was referenced in the slides, there could be some real issues ahead of us here that we really need to look at. But thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time this evening. We appreciate it.
Is it possible to ask a very important question? Professor, I do have a question related to the belt curve on income. There's one in there, lower 25%. It has a defined discretionary monetary level, but what impact would a income tax have on the act of discretionary income? And would that affect the community in terms of seriousness of people who survive in this city?
So I'm a bit remiss about what you mean by their discretionary income.
They have their bills and everything else. Now you're going to assess them income tax. They use to do anything else beyond just paying a bill.
So...
Are they going to survive?
That I can speak to because that's an individual decision, person to person.
And it becomes a variable that needs to be considered by the city council if you're going to implement any income tax.
We will look at that and we'll talk with that as we go forward. This is a...
So none of you are being recorded right now. This is a public meeting, and you're all in the back where no one can hear or see you. And this is not a... If you have public comments you want to make, there's a portion of the meeting set aside for public comments, and I'd just ask you to reserve your comments until then.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next up, Grange Hall Road TIF.
This is ordinance number 25-14, creating the Grange Hall Road Tax Increment Financing Incentive Districts, declaring improvements to the parcels within each incentive district to be a public purpose and exempt from real property taxation, requiring the owners of those parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of those service payments, and specifying the public infrastructure improvements that benefit or serve parcels in the incentive districts.
Staff, I guess that's you, Josh?
So this is going to be a little bit of a repeat. We've already been through the initial hearing that's required by the statute for a TIF. This is for the TIF ordinance, so this is a public hearing. If you go to the first slide, these are going to be essentially the same presentation I did before, just explaining what a TIF is, tax increment financing. It's an economic development tool for financing infrastructure projects that cities use. There's multiple ways that municipality can be eligible, or property can be eligible for a TIF. The most common of those is that the city engineer has certified that the public infrastructure serving the district is inadequate to meet the needs of that district. And as you'll see, it's Exhibit A to Exhibit B, is the certificate by the engineer. As part of the ordinance, we're adopting or accepting that certification by the engineer. There also needs to be a written economic development plan that supports this. That is Exhibit B to the ordinance, and the ordinance once again adopts that economic development plan. So all of those check marks for being eligible for a TIF are met with this ordinance. TIFs can be up to 30 years and can be up to a 100% exemption of the property taxes. If the TIF is longer than 10 years or greater than 75%, because there is an impact on the school, when you get to those significant amount of numbers, the school would be required or have the ability to approve of the TIF. If you're less than those figures because the impact is so minor in comparison, school approval isn't needed. So if you want to move to the next slide... Oh, I skipped the second slide. So instead of property taxes, owners pay what are called pilots, which essentially they pay the same amount of money, but it's put into a payment in lieu of taxes. And those monies are paid for those infrastructure projects. There's no reduction, like I said, in what the individuals would pay. It just goes into a different format. So if you want to go to the next slide. So this just shows you over time, you know, that right now there's a very little amount of tax being obtained from the particular parcel because there isn't any improvements on the parcel. Over time, as the parcel, as the, not parcel, but the entire property develops, there'll be increases in taxes. And for the five-year rolling TIF that we're talking about, 75% of the revenue, those pilots will go to the, pay for the TIF, while 25% will go to what it's normally designed for. So oftentimes, people think that TIFs are abatements. They are not. People pay the same exact amount of money they would. It's just, once again, you can go to the next slide, sorry. Pilots are identical to what the tax payments would be. They're just put into a different format. So if you want to go to the next one. So just to talk about this particular development, it's approximately 54 acres with 121 homes. The average home value, and I think this is probably conservative, is $550,000 with an estimated total project value of $66,550,000, with an estimated total taxable value of $23,000 and change, or I'm sorry, $23 million and change. So instead of this being that maximum 30-year, 100% TIF, what we have is a 75% rolling five-year TIF. The project is developed into, or split up into four incentive districts. And when the value of the improvements in each one of those districts equals $6.5 million, that begins that five-year TIF period. And then after the five-year period, the TIF has just gone for that particular development. So the impact of that is so that it has almost no impact on the schools. You have that just five-year period where the school is missing out on some funding, but it was funding that wasn't there to begin with, and they're still collecting 25% of that. And then it goes right back up to what they would receive without it after that five-year period. The estimated TIF revenue I gave at the last presentation was the original TIF revenue, which we had just a five-year TIF. It did not take into consideration that this is a five-year rolling TIF, which allows those four districts to have more impact and to reach that $6.5 million value before they kick in. So we believe that the estimated value is, for the TIF, is $5 million, and I think it's actually in excess of that. There is a development or reimbursement agreement. There are two improvements being done on Grange Hall Road, and $800,000 of either the TIF or the proposed NCA will be used, up to that amount, to pay for those two improvements. But that leaves the rest of the revenue from the TIF for other infrastructure improvements within, in the district. So my recommendation is approval of the ordinance in accordance with the process that we've been going through. If anyone has any questions, please let me know.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, so if someone would like to come forward and speak to it, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Bob Trout, 2187 Bassett Court. Okay, this is in regard to the 25-14 Grange Hall Road TIF. The developer is requesting approximately $880,000 for required storm drainage upgrades. Understand that. New development has approximately 600 feet of road fromage at Grange Hall Road, 600. The TIF expands the need to cover a 1.2-mile portion of Grange Hall in the vicinity of Patterson and Shakertown. Deficiencies listed in the first three bullets that were indicated, many of the current high-use roadways in the city. All right, additionally, there are thousands of miles of these type of roadways throughout the city. Like I said, this type of road that we're talking about is very common. All right? Let's see. And making, Ohio making these requirements, moot point because dubious and valid because there's a grandfather clause for the existing roadways, and we're good to go on it. The TIF on Grange Hall Road infrastructure needs, the need declared by the Beaver Creek Engineering Department in MO 14 August. It's generally narrow, lacks adequate shoulders, and has ditches. Hills need to be lowered. Those three, basically the first three bullets, Grange Hall, they're continued to use in their grandfathered in. The other two is a bridge over Little Beaver Creek and turn lanes from traffic lights on Patterson roadway. The last two bullets begs the question of a high cost for a low-usage, low-flow-rate Grange Hall Road. Justification fails the litmus test of common sense, fiscal prudence, and responsible stewardship of the public trust. This project, as presented to the public, does not warrant or justify the huge expenditure of over $14.75 million to justify 1.2-mile road improvements that supports a road that only has a current flow rate, a vehicle flow rate right now, of approximately five vehicles per minute, five vehicles a minute. All right? The data is based on the information that was provided by the city engineer. As an example, at 40 miles an hour, there would be an average of 720 feet of separation between vehicles at 12-second intervals. All right? That is not an issue, no matter which way you slice it. So Mayor Adams, city manager, Mr. Landrum, and the city staff, the residents of this city expect better from all of you than this type of mediocrity and the extremely high cost for a road that has minimal traffic usage. It's ludicrous that you want to spend a king's ransom for a little-used 1.2-mile strip of road. There is going to be a legacy that's going to be created by this prominently cemented and prominently cements Beaver Creek in the history books of city government as failures for a $15 million diamond road that only has a tentative traffic flow of five cars a minute. City council, I urge you to vote no on the ordinance based on the lack of merit to justify an extremely high-listed cost timeline, potential for escalating costs, in addition to propose a resolution to explore means to address minimal improvements essential to development, the 880,000 requests, and sewer improvements. All right. Feedback. I did show your TIF to some local engineers, and I'm going to be blunt. The first comment they said was basically, what the hell are they trying to do? All right? What are they thinking of? I also solicited feedback from two professors, one from UD and one from Wright State, and they expressed a desire to get a business case documentation and explore doing a case study on this thing because they think this is a waste and a boondoggle. And lastly, I've shared the city plans regarding the TIF to neighbors, church members, college students, and senior citizens, and they are appalled. In closing, I want to publicly hold you accountable to ensure that all residents, current and future, will be treated fairly and exactly the same. They must have the same voice to vote where their taxes are being spent, to remove their individual rights by using these TIFs that voids their voice and vote for years is repugnant to the values we hold dear. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Come forward, state your name and your address. You have three minutes.
Hi, good evening. Edward Malouf, 4128 Dedleton Point, Beaver Creek, Ohio. First of all, that was a very nice study, but with all these studies, they miss one important thing, the people. I didn't see anything about the impact it's going to have on seniors, working families with this. Number one, you guys are pushing the city tax. Shame on you. But yet you got this TIF...
This is about the TIF. We're not talking about...
Yeah, let me get to that. Okay, the city tax. You got this TIF, which there's more questions than answers. You sold a parcel of land, which is the people's land, not your land, it's the people's land, so they can build 54 houses and pay this money that we need this tax revenue because we've got to have a city income tax, but yet you're going to divert it to move the funds. This sounds like mafioso, Boston mafioso here. What's going on? And what gave you the right to sell this land for houses to a development? And how much money did we put into that land to sell it? And how much did we really make on this land? Very bad stewards. Tell me, how much did we put into that land? I saw that beautiful weeks of the trucks and the water and all these pipes and everything going in, and now we're going to sell it to a developer? There's something fishy here. Okay, you can shake your head all you want. I'm going to do a lot more investigation. Bob, please continue your investigation. Second of all, you guys are missing the boat. You're not listening. Property tax could be a thing of the future. The state house, our legislatures, are scared. The latest poll is 60% far abolishing, 40% against. People are saying, if that makes the ballot, it's going to pass. Are you reading the political ads from our future governor? He wants to cap property tax and eliminate income taxes. So why don't you start working for the people? Start looking at better alternatives instead of wasting our time on this pie-in-the-sky property tax. Matter of fact, folks, I hope this is being recorded, we are having a signature marathon at Laffino Park to abolish property tax. Please come, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Sir, this is about the TIF.
It is about the TIF. It all has to do...
We're not advertising...
It all has to do with the TIF, because I don't want the money going to something else. If it's property tax, it goes to where my money goes. It goes to where their money goes. So I don't have to listen to Mr. Landrum saying, we need a city income tax, we need money. You're going to have $23 million worth of possible tax revenue that you're going to throw away on a project that never should have happened. Stop making Beaver Creek Dayton. You're turning us into Dayton. We're a small, nice city community, and you want to build, build, build. I can understand the private citizen, but when the city starts selling its land to developers, that's not right. And given these special deals, you might say it's not a special deal, but I'm going to tell you what. I read in the newspaper, that land wasn't even zoned for houses. Now, it's got to go to the board. Anyway, that's my, that's what I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Again, think of the citizens. You don't own the city. You just manage it. People put their trust in you. Be good stewards. Sir, you know what being a good steward is, as a Christian man. You know what a steward is.
You can have a servant.
Someone donate time to you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I will close the public portion of this and the council. Councilman Curran. Councilman Doer.
A few questions, Mayor. So citizens ask us to be creative, to think through different options. And the TIF with the NCA is a different option. It does give us a different opportunity. It does provide us a level of impact fee because work is needed on Grange Hall. I mean, ultimately, it's a significant hill. There's a limited ability to pay for it, and this is an opportunity to do that. A couple of questions. One is, maybe legal counsel, you're the appropriate person, but what if the TIF increments underperform? What happens?
So that'll change the funding. But once again, the increments don't even become, they don't even start until you hit that $6.5 million mark. So we have a baseline of what we know that we can get, but they're obviously expecting it to get more. The great thing about doing it in the four incentive districts is if it takes longer to develop this property than anticipated, say, there's, incentive District 1 gets finished, and incentive District 2 doesn't happen for a few more years because of reception or something like that. Then the TIF is still there, waiting for the, when that development actually happens. So it may take longer to get the funding, but hopefully it wouldn't have a significant impact on the overall amount. But if you do have, if you hit that 6.5 million, and then no more houses are built during the next five years, there's a chance it doesn't make as much money.
Okay, but there's a built-in buffer to protect the city?
Absolutely, built-in buffer. And then, once again, if that were to happen, there'd be even less impact on the schools because the five years would be over. Once you hit that 6.5, that five-year timer starts. And so if there goes 6.5 million and then nothing happens for the next five years, we get the 75% during that period of time, and then it goes back to 100% if that development completes after that, the TIF doesn't affect that at all.
I mean, ultimately, we have a market-based economy. But there's a buyer, seller, and government should be largely out of the way. And so we have an opportunity here, I think, to do some things creatively. How do we bound the money directly for Grange Hall? Because that's a concern of citizens, you know, using it elsewhere on different things. How do we properly bound it for the public?
It's required to be used for the incentive district. There's no specific requirement that is for Grange Hall Road, but we, as the city knows, that's our priority in this case, is to fix that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Schwartz.
I don't really have any questions, but do just kind of want to share what Councilmember Doer kind of explained. You know, we are constantly being asked to come up with creative ways, and this is a creative solution, incredibly creative solution. It took me a little while to get on board with, but I can see the benefit, especially in that area. So I just want to thank staff and thank the city manager for, you know, coming up, and legal counsel for coming up with these creative ideas to try and address issues that are within the city. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Garcia.
Thank you. Yeah, Josh, can you just explain a few things to me? I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly. So it's a five-year rolling TIF, and you said after five years, the TIF goes away, which I'm interpreting that as meaning after five years of someone paying what would have been property taxes to the pilot, they begin paying property taxes to the city year six, thereon. Is that correct?
Correct. Normal distribution, it's not all of this, it goes back to normal distribution.
Okay, all right, just making sure I understood that correctly. And then, to talk about the schools a little bit, you know, I know we talked about the revenue that this can bring in for the schools, but you mentioned the funding wouldn't have been there to begin with. So explain to me a little bit about that as well. So without this TIF, the schools are getting money from this TIF that they otherwise would not have gotten at all.
Certainly. So right now, it's an open field, and there's no improvements on there other than some ponds. So they're getting almost no tax revenue. Well, yeah, right now, it's tax exempt, so zero tax revenue. So the schools don't get any money until the development is made. And then during that, once again, it won't be, it won't be immediate. The TIF isn't immediate. So while those first homes are getting built, the school, if that takes a while, the school will be getting its normal funding distribution during that period of time. Once we hit the $6.5 million mark, then you just have that five-year limited period where it's a 75% exemption. And then after that, it goes back to, they would have normal tax distribution from a fully-developed area, which would be way more than they're getting currently, which, once again, is nothing.
And then, so we're estimating $23,292,500 is what you have, correct?
That's the taxable value. That's not the actual value. And I said 30% of the actual value is the taxable value, I believe. But I'll turn to the former auditor of the county to give me the actual math for this one.
No, I'm sorry, as you're coming up here. Come on up, come join the party. But as you're coming up here, the reason I'm asking is because that maximum of the $800,000 for the Grange Hall, we're still left, as a city, with that remaining 23-plus million estimation, correct?
So the 23 million is the taxable value of the property.
Okay.
The TIF income, as we said in the presentation, estimated, because, once again, that depends on the actual value of the homes and how fast they get built. The estimate on the rolling TIF is 5 million, so we would end up with $4.2 million extra to do the improvements in that area, above and beyond that $800,000, which is just those limited improvements for that particular development.
I concur. It's estimated to generate $5 million over the life of the TIF. It's based on current tax rates and that values would remain stable throughout the life of the TIF, neither of which are going to happen, but you have to build models based on assumptions, and we have no idea what would happen going forward.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you both.
Thank you for clarifying that 5 million as opposed to 23 million, because it was, I saw that, but apparently it wasn't seen. So thank you for that.
Am I right, is that 30% of the, or is it 35% of that?
That's the taxable value, it's 35% of the.
35%, I was almost there.
When you get a praise value, once it reaches 6.5 million, is when the TIF becomes active.
Correct.
So just rudimentary math on house, home values and sales and everything else, that's per TIF section, per section. It, you know, 10, 12 houses.
Correct.
And then it starts. This is very out of the box, and it's exactly what our community has asked us to think about from a revenue diversification perspective. So in my opinion, we're being more than responsible, trying to find alternate ways to pay for infrastructure improvements rather than continually going back to the voters and asking for more property tax levies. So, you know, I could, I'd be happy to talk to both of our public speakers about that and their opinions, but this is a very unique way to fund public infrastructure without burdening the other 47,000 residents. So in my opinion, this makes a ton of sense. The only other question I had was about the estimated improvements of roughly 15 million. And if I understand that correctly, we're not obligated to do all of those improvements.
Correct.
We can improve as we see fit. So the diamond road that someone mentioned doesn't have to be a diamond road. We can use the revenue that we've got to fix the most important part of the road. That's all I've got.
Sure.
Involved in TIFs, and they're very, very common. I know it's a sensitive issue with the audience, but if you look around the region, various communities have used TIFs for both high-income, as well as areas that they want to redevelop. And so it's not anything that we're on the front end, so to speak, and being the first city that's ever used it. I've been involved in four of them, I guess, over the years, come to think about it.
Thank you for that input. I know you've got a wealth of information on that, so. And I agree with pretty much what everyone's been saying. I think it's very creative. I think it's something that we really need to look at. And with that, I will ask for a motion.
Motion to move ordinance 25-14 to a second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 25-14 to a second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Ordinance resolutions and PUDs, ordinance 25-15.
This is the second reading of ordinance number 25-15. It's an ordinance rezoning 54.2852 acres from R1A1 Family Residential and A1 Agricultural, further described as book three, page 13, parcel 29 and 30 on the property tax maps of Green County, Ohio, to an R PUD 25-4 Residential Plan Unit Development.
Is there anything else from the applicant?
Thank you. Jim Lipnells, Rockford Homes, 999 Polaris Parkway, Columbus. I don't have anything further to add, but I did want to address that everyone was here in case he had any questions. We already passed the site-specific plan, and this is for the 121 units on the 54 acres. So here to answer any questions.
Staff, anything? Counsel?
Sir, did you have the opportunity to look at the specific site plan again? We talked about lot number eight, for example.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't progressed further on the site plan with our engineer. I kind of need my zoning prior to letting them loose on the full thing. But when we come back with, we'll come, be coming back, I think in October for the NCA, I'll have an answer for you then.
Just a handful of lots where?
Yeah, I understand.
Adhesments, driveways, I would like to check before.
Yeah, there's a handful of, I guess, site, site plan issues, a couple lots that I'm looking at. So we may end up losing one, I don't know.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Doer, the other thing I would add is, we spent a lot of time last meeting talking about signage and concern about that area with traffic, and we did get that additional information about the amount of accidents. So to share, there have been, I think it was seven accidents in 2023 between those intersections and across all of Grange Road in that area. There's only been four in 2024, only four to date. And driving that road almost daily from both directions, there is signage on each side that says "Hidden Drive" well before you get to where the new development is, and coming the other direction, well before you hit the church, which is before you would even get to the new development. So I, I'm not sure if this is as big of a concern as we originally made it out to be, but I think with the improvements that we're going to see in that area combined with the existing signage, I'm, I'm more confident in what we're seeing. Do you want to clarify something, please?
Yeah, I was just going to say, excuse my voice. In talking with engineering, engineering has thoroughly pointed out to me that they will do whatever counsel, as far as to make any of you feel safer when construction gets started, by throwing up more additional signs and warning people. So they, engineering clearly said that's not an issue at all. They'd be more than happy to put out additional signage during that period of time.
Anything else? Councilwoman Schwartz. Vice Mayor Bales. I know a question was brought up the last time about the problem with the roads there. Chief, I know you did a study. Would you mind sharing the results of that? I know Councilwoman Bales, or excuse me, Councilwoman Garcia referred to it, but I think it was at the intersections more so than it was on the road.
Yeah, that's correct, and I don't have the stats right in front of me, but we did look at the intersection, East Patterson, Grange Hall, all the way through Grange Hall, down to Grange Hall and Shakertown. So both of those intersections and the entire roadway. We searched it various ways, because sometimes it depends on how the data is input. For example, is the crash at, you know, is it input East Patterson and Shakertown, or Shakertown, or I'm sorry, Grange Hall and East Patterson, or East Patterson and Grange Hall? You know, it depends on how the call comes in. So we looked at it, every combination and all along that. And so the stats that I provided to you was accurate. And so we haven't seen a problem in terms of that. And like you would expect, when you look at the stats, most of the crashes are at those two main intersections.
Thank you.
Well, Your Honor, I'm still making a plea for a light of some type, yellow light.
I think the manager's already addressed that. He said if, once it starts doing some construction, they'll put something out. At least signs will see what warrants.
Well, we got plenty of signs. Councilmember mentioned the signs. I just think we're going to have a lot of activity there that we haven't seen before, a lot. And I'm not talking about anything permanent, but I think for a three-month period, just to get everybody used to slowing down, that is a very high-speed area. And I think, as Councilwoman Garcia mentioned, she drives on it. I drive on it every day, and I see a lot of people come over that hill subjectively, and, huh, they're moving. And I just know that all, we're going to have a lot of people, a lot of trucks moving around. They haven't had that before, yeah. The two intersections are okay, but we haven't had any of that activity in between. And that's what I'm just trying to, a little bit of caution, that's all.
I think we can.
End of my comment.
I think we can have engineering take a look at that and monitor as we go, just to make sure that if it's needed, it'll be put there, so.
I understand.
Mr. Mormon, could you address that comment? Is there such a, is there a temporary construction flashing beacon sign that is, that is available?
Yeah, absolutely. I think we can accommodate, Councilman Curran's request. We talked a little bit about it this weekend, in fact, and it shouldn't be an issue. I have some thoughts on what we can do to have some beacons out there with some signage as well, so.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Bales.
Motion to approve ordinance 25-15.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 25-15. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 25-16.
This is the second reading of ordinance number 25-16. It's an ordinance to declare certain city-owned property interests as surplus and to approve the conveyance of land for right-of-way purposes from city-owned property generally known as Green County Auditor Parcel Number B42000200060001500, and generally located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Grange Hall Road. of Grange Hall Road and Research Boulevard.
Anything from staff? Nothing. Well, we failed to do the public input at the last meeting, and I apologize for that. So, we will open the floor to public input on this particular subject. Please come forward, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Yes, hello, my name is Ryan Capo at three six three six King Edward Way, and I just have a pretty basic comment. It would be nice if there were some maps showing where the locations are that you guys are talking about here, because I don't really know, I, I know where that intersection is that she just mentioned, but I'm not sure what the, you know, plans are for, you know, what you guys are thinking about doing there. But it's a basic comment.
Yeah, it was presented last, last time, but I'll have staff come through and just give a brief overview so that you understand.
Yes, good evening. Twenty-twenty-six, we have an improvement planned along Grange Hall Road. It's going to construct a bikeway beginning at the intersection of Research Boulevard, State Route eighty-eight thirty-five and Grange Hall Road. The path is going to head south from there along the west side of Grange Hall Road. It's going to cross over Patterson Road. When it gets to the Spring House Park, it's going to kind of meander through the park just a bit. It's going to be a little bit wider through the park as well. When it gets south of the park, it's going to continue on past Shaker Town Road, and it's going to connect into the existing path that's along the west side of Grange Hall Road directly across from, from the park down that way, so. Again, what, what we're talking about this evening is there's city-owned property there at the corner of Grange Hall Road and Research Boulevard. In order to construct the, the bike path, the dedication of some additional land is needed in order to fit that bike path. And again, the city owns the land. What this will do by dedicating the right-of-way at this point is if that land were to sell between now and the construction of the project, it would, it would eliminate any possible conflicts with future development. They know what they're buying and such, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And anyone else? With that, I'll close the public portion, and this is a second reading, so.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty-five sixteen.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance twenty-five dash sixteen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-one.
This is resolution number twenty-five dash twenty-one, a resolution approving a petition for special assessments for special energy improvement projects and a supplemental plan for public improvements under Ohio Revised Code, Chapter seventeen-ten, and declaring the necessity of acquiring, constructing, and approving certain public inputs described in the plan for public improvements in cooperation with the Beaver Creek Energy Special Improvement District and declaring an emergency.
This is my show, I think, for the rest of the, the meeting, so this is not just, I'm going to do a presentation now, but I'm going to cover the next three things on, on the agenda. There's a resolution of necessity, an ordinance to proceed with the improvements, and an ordinance levying special assessments. This is the Dayton Raiders Swim Club is seeking to upgrade their HBAC system using Property Assess Clean Energy Program, otherwise known as PACE. PACE is a financing method for investments in energy efficiency projects. There's a lot of benefits to the property owner. It covers a hundred percent of the cost. There's a long payback period for them, and the, their special assessments are used to repay and secure that upfront funding. So, there's no cost to the city for this. The only thing that this means is that the city will have to do special assessments onto the owner's tax bill, collects that money to pay, to pay the, the amount that's owed. Not only is there no obligation on the city for this, but actually there's an administrative and legal fee, and I can't say we're going to become rich because of this. It's a, I believe it's less than a thousand dollars, I think nine hundred and fifty dollars to pay for the administrative and legal fees, to pay for that, but this is, this is a benefit to the Dayton Raiders Swim Club with almost no cost, well, with no cost to the city, just a little bit of administrative activity that we have to do that we get reimbursed for. Just to cover some of the basics, neither the ESID, which is the, the district, or the city has, are obligated to pay any of the money that's owed. Counsel has to create a special fund for the, the special assessments, and once again, the city's only obligation is to collect and pay those special assessments from the property taxes. So, my recommendation is approval. This is a, is a resolution. The next two are ordinances to be adopted as an emergencies as of September twenty-two, and that's just so that they can be eligible for the financing. This isn't the city's first. We already have an ESID.
Three. We have three in place, or this would be number four. Anything from counsel?
A few comments, Mayor. First, I think the Dayton Raiders Swim Club is a wonderful asset in our community. All three of my children have gone through and become better swimmers as a result, so they're a great partner within the city. Do we correct the paperwork, pages ninety to one of five, and that's available to, to everyone?
Yes.
So, I mean, there's misprint in the, in the agenda, but that's, that's noteworthy. With regard to the new HVAC system, is there any change of placement or anything of which we should be aware for the specific site? You know, there's, you know, very, very minor modifications from what I see and can understand, just dotting i's and crossing t's is all I'm trying to do.
This, this property's not located within any BUD that I'm aware of, and so any change, it would just be an administrative issue. We wouldn't bring it to planning commissioner city council, but there are boilerplate conditions in our zoning code, like for the HVAC units, I believe some of them are rooftop, some are on the ground, so they have to screen them one by another, just based on straight zoning code.
Just wanted to double check, so appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else?
Is it clear who's paying the assessments?
Yes.
Okay, they are. Right, well, I think that needs to be explained.
Sure, the, the assessments are on the, are on the tax bill for the property itself, so actually if the property were ever to sell, it, it follows the property.
All right, okay.
It's just a benefit to the owner, so he pays for it over a longer period of time. Right, no li, no liability all on the city.
Well, I think it's, and it's worth noting that the PACE program is a wonderful, again, economic development tool that we have to keep our buildings functional and pertinent and viable for generations. And it's a way for those who lease the properties to spread out those payments and afford a major improvement for reasonable costs over time, so it's good stuff. The goal is actually that the, the savings exceed the, the payments over time, so that, that's why it makes sense for the property owner as well.
That's right, along with the efficiency of the product, so. Anything else?
Mayor, I move to approve resolution twenty-five dash twenty-one.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty-five dash twenty-one. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now we have ordinance twenty-five dash eighteen.
This is ordinance number twenty-five dash eighteen, an ordinance determining to proceed with the acquisition, construction, and improvement of certain public improvements in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio, in cooperation with the Beaver Creek Energy Special Improvement District and declaring an emergency.
Anything else?
So, I don't have much to add other than this one is for the ordinance to proceed with the actual improvements.
Okay, this is an ordinance, so we will open it up for public input onto this subject. If you'd like to come forward and speak to it, please come forward, state your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Bob Trout, twenty-one eighty-seven Bassett Court. I do not understand exactly how the funding works on this. Is it taken off their property tax that would be paid and diverted into a different fund?
Well, I, it's not normal for me to answer these. So, they have a lender who is going to finance the project. It's the repayment that comes through the property taxes. There's an assessment put onto their property taxes. We collect that from the property taxes and then pay the lender back. We, we, we're not obligated to pay anything on our own. It all comes from them.
That helped. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I will close the public portion of this. Counsel? Any input?
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance twenty-five dash eighteen.
Second.
To a second reading. Sorry, I was looking into about the emergency. Yes, to a second reading.
I have a motion.
Hot scenario where you, second reading, but as an emergency at the second reading, sorry.
I have a motion to move ordinance twenty-five dash eighteen to a second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now ordinance twenty-five dash nineteen.
This is ordinance number twenty-five dash nineteen, an ordinance levying special assessments for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, and approving certain public improvements in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio, in cooperation with the Beaver Creek Energy Special Improvement District, authorizing and approving an energy project cooperative agreement by and among the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio, the Beaver Creek Energy Special Improvement District, Dayton Raiders Facility Incorporated, and the IR Capital Funding LLC, providing for the financing of those public improvements. Authorizing and approving a special assessment agreement by and between the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio, the County Treasurer of Green County, Ohio, Dayton Raiders Facilities Incorporated, the Beaver Creek Energy Special Improvement District, and the IR Capital Funding LLC, regarding those special assessments and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Anything else you want to add?
So, this is the ordinance where we're actually levying the special assessments and being able to collect them.
And again, this is an ordinance, so we will ask for public input. If there are, is any, please come forward, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Seeing none, I will close the public portion. Anything from counsel? I have a motion.
Your Honor, I've moved twenty-five dash nineteen to the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance twenty-five dash nineteen to a second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-two.
This is resolution number twenty-five dash twenty-two, a resolution by Beaver Creek City Council authorizing the city manager to execute documents and take all necessary actions to participate in the settlement provided for in the thirteenth amended joint chapter eleven plan of reorganization of Purdue Pharma LP, U.S. Bankruptcy Court, SDNY, case number nineteen dash two-three-six-four-nine.
Sure, so I think everyone's aware at this point of the opioid epidemic and Purdue Pharma's role in the opioid epidemic. Counsel's actually passed prior resolutions, but you'll notice that this is the thirteenth amended. There's been some issues with the, the family and whether they would be liable personally or not, so this thing has gone through multiple iterations. This just gives us the ability to join that, that settlement, and this has to be completed by the end of the month, so I'm recommending approval of resolution so that we can sign off on this.
Counsel, any input?
Mayor, I'd motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash twenty-two.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty-five dash twenty-two. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And resolution twenty-five dash twenty-three, along the same lines.
This is resolution number twenty-five dash twenty-three, a resolution by the Beaver Creek City Council authorizing the city manager to execute documents and take all necessary actions to participate in and accept the secondary manufacturer's national opioid, opioid settlement.
So, Purdue Pharma wasn't the only person who was selling opioids, and so there are, there's an additional lawsuit. And you'll see in the, the resolution, there's actually eight different corporations listed as, as part of the settlement. In this particular case of this, similar to the past, the prior resolution, authorize the city manager to enter into documents necessary for a settlement of this case. The deadline for this one, I think, is, it's not the end of this month, it's in October, though, so I'm recommending approval of the resolution so we can join the settlement.
Thank you. Counsel?
I'd move to approve resolution twenty-five dash twenty-three.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty-five dash twenty-three. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Counsel time. Counsel McCurran.
Thank you, your honor. First of all, I'd like again to congratulate Officer Harrison, wish him the very, very best, and as Vice Mayor Bales mentioned, knowing him a long time, the whole family is public service oriented and glad to have him on the team, part of our police force here in Beaver Creek. Also, special congratulations to the Popcorn Festival Committee. Had some great comments from citizens as I took my turn under the tent, and just was really a great day, the weather, everything just was perfect. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel McDouer.
Appreciate it, Mayor. Thank you. Want to thank, um, I want to thank the city manager for the city finances town hall and for Monica Jones, the assistant city manager, for just the, laying out the information. I think comparative context is key, and you can see that the budget of Beaver Creek is well below many other municipalities in this area, significantly lower, and a lot more road to pave as well. So, I appreciate the detailed information, the work that was done, just to give our citizens information. And I really want to thank the residents for such a great turnout as well, because it was really very well attended. I apologize, I had to leave to pick up one of my daughters at gymnastics, but that's my life, and Councilwoman Garcia understands as well. So, I guess the other place we go is Ankeny Soccer, yeah, Ankeny Soccer Field. So, I am helping to fill in coaching. I'm not directly a coach this semester, this, this season, but I've been coaching my, one of my other daughter's soccer team, the fourth and fifth grade girls. They are the Bubble Gum Blasters team. They're hot pink, and so it is, it has been a ton of fun, and I thoroughly enjoy investing in our young people. That really is wonderful, and appreciate those that put together Beaver Creek Soccer Association, do so much work, really great in the community. Mayor, your first Thursday event was very nice. I'm still trying to get the name right, Double Tree by Hilton, the fifth one, it's still strange to, to get used to that, but excellent, well-attended event, and so many excellent community events. I was really impressed by Dear Dinah. They, they help in human trafficking in the wider Dayton area. At Cedarville University, we brought them to campus to, to talk about how each individual is made in God's image, worthy of dignity, respect, and as such, to really clamp down against human trafficking, and they do wonderful work. And in terms of municipality, we've tried to help them too in terms of legislation several years ago with the registration with massage parlors, so I think there's, there's a lot that's working connected there. Popcorn Festival was, again, wonderful. Thank you to all the organizers and the colonels, really great event. And while I did not get to do the ribbon cutting at Warehouse Four on CJ, I did get to enjoy some coffee on Sunday, so, after church, so that was really very enjoyable. Congratulations to them. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel Ms. Schwartz?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to congratulate Officer Riley. Just hearing him come up and talk about his history in Beaver Creek and kind of growing up in the community, it really means something special to be able to join that, the police force here, and so congratulations to him, and we are very blessed to have him. Just echo the sentiments of my fellow council members. Popcorn Festival was lovely, the weather was lovely, it was just such a wonderful turnout. There's been many years where I've been sweating my butt off and fighting rain, and so this year was really just a great, a great weather and great turnout. I also had the opportunity a few weeks ago to attend the community memorial gathering that was held at the Green that was held at the Green County Courthouse. That memorial gathering was for those who have been lost to the opioid epidemic, so very timely, given the resolutions today. On that same day, we also had our Region 14 meeting, and so to provide an update there, we had first a presentation from one of our grantees that we funded for the first cycle, Miami University, actually, and what they had put together is called R Zilliance, and it is essentially an Airbnb-type product that can put those who are in recovery and help them find housing. And so you go into the app and you put in your needs, do you have a pet, do you have kids, what kind of recovery housing are you looking for, when are you looking for it, and it helps put those in recovery in contact with those housing facilities. We are in the process of trying to help that grantee because it does cover the entire region, so some of those houses are located within our county. We are in the process of trying to connect them with these recovery houses because it does, it does not cost them anything, it does take a little bit of manpower to input the property in there and make sure that the status is updated, but a really wonderful program. In that same vein, all of our grantees have completed their first round of funding, their first year of funding, and so that means that they are required to submit progress reports. Those reports were submitted at the end of July, and so we will be getting a presentation around October, November. It will be during an executive session, but we'll be able to see the progress that those grantees are making, and where there may be some pain points that we could help them with, so looking forward to seeing how that goes. And last, but certainly not least, finally, there has been an announcement that there will be a cycle two. We don't know when that cycle is going to open up, we will find out at our next meeting, but it should happen probably pretty quickly. The RFP process has been streamlined a little bit, so it should be a little bit easier for applicants to propose, and the region, or the One Ohio Board of Directors, has approved a $40 million distribution, and so to all of the regions, and so that's distributed based upon the allocation that was come up with when this foundation was formed. So that means we get an additional $5 million, that'll be going to Region 14. So as you may recall, we had about $2 million left over last year from our round of funding, so that gives us around $7 million to fund projects related to the opioid epidemic within our region. So we're working on priorities, the things that we want to see, the type of proposals that we really value, and hopefully we will be in the process of awarding some of those early next year. Let's look up, thank you.
Very good, thank you very much. Counsel McGarcius.
Thank you. I feel almost like a broken record up here, because I feel like every week, every meeting, I'm complimenting our officers. So huge shout out to our police department, who very promptly saved me on Sunday morning through cryptic text messages, so thank you so much that they came to my rescue. For residents who don't know, and I didn't know this until yesterday, you can text 911, so if there's ever an issue or an emergency, you can text 911 if you're in a position where you can't call. Fortunately, the officers were very, very prompt in assisting me, very professional, wonderful, I can't say enough good things about our police department. And with that, again, another congratulations to Officer Riley. You know, he said this morning during his swearing-in, and then up here as well, he feels like he won the lottery, and the feeling is mutual, because anyone, I mean, he is, I think I can say this, he's very young, and for someone to devote their life to public service at that age is truly a blessing, and we're very lucky to have him. The weather this weekend was great, Popcorn Festival was great, Italian Festival was great, my family was there all weekend volunteering, my kids had a great time, so we appreciate everyone who put on those festivals for our community. I have the opportunity to read our anniversaries. We have a lot of them, keeping in, I guess, theme with my praising of a police. I know Officer Riley said he fully intends to retire here, and I think that shows with Officer Yolanda Weber with 14 years of service. Also, keeping with our police department, Jason Millet with four years, Bethany Morissette with three, Chuck Worley with three years, Matthew Lambert, Carolyn Sensiman, and Alexis Eldridge, all celebrating one year of service with VPD, and I feel like we just swore them in yesterday, so it's been great to see. With engineering, also Nick Smith with an impressive 15 years, Ryan McAlney with engineering for five years, and in our Parks Department, celebrating their first years of service with us, Allison Bush and Kayla Sensenbaugh, so thank you to everyone for everything you do for our city, we could not run without you, so thank you so much. The one last thing I do want to say is our 9/11 memorial service will be this Thursday at the sculpture at our memorial area. At nine, is it 8:40?
It's about 8:30.
8:30, so please do come out, obviously listen to the mayor on times other than me, but we do hope to see you there for that very important day of remembrance, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Bales.
Thank you, Mayor. To add on to what Councilmember Dewar said about Dear Dinah, I had just scheduled them for a Rotary Club presentation, December 19th, so if anyone would like to hear more about that human trafficking work that they're doing, be my guest at Rotary. I too want to, again, congratulate Officer Riley, great person and excited to have him on board. I'd like to welcome the new Dual Brand Marriott. The mayor and I got to be a part of the ribbon cutting last week, that is up by the mall at Fairfield Commons, and they have probably the nicest lobby of the hotels around here, it has a golf simulator, very interesting. I too got to attend the ribbon cutting for Warehouse Four. Not a big coffee fan, but everything else on their menu looked great. I'd like to invite anyone out to the community conversations with counsel. I will be at the Pizza Dive on September 18th at 6 o'clock, along with a couple of others, I forget who's on the list, Councilmember Dewar. And then the last thing I'll mention is I attended the MVRPC Board of Directors meeting last week. The big takeaway was the new application process for grant funding this year, and they're having a seminar, which I'm sure our staff is aware of, after the next TAC meeting on September 18th, so I just wanted to mention it, just in case you hadn't heard that. But we always do such a great job on grant applications, and they said that they're changing a few things, so there we go. They also handed out a couple of interesting seminars that are upcoming. One is a workshop focused on youth group homes, which I'm not certain that we've ever experienced that in Beaver Creek, but I've experienced it in a few other places in my career, and so they've got a seminar on that coming up. They handed out a regional resiliency guidebook and toolkit, that was kind of an outcropping of the tornadoes, but then it's grown into more of a regional toolkit for other disaster stressors, health hazards, et cetera, et cetera, and so they've got information on their website about that. And then finally, they passed out some information about the Dayton Region's Economic Development Strategy, which they partnered with the DDC to put on, and they produced all of the major outcomes for the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy that both MVRPC and the DDC is working on in the region. So it was an interesting meeting, and if you want to hear more, just give me a call.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, thank you very much. I too would like to welcome our newest police officer, Officer Riley comes from a family of first responders. His dad was with the Fairborn Fire Department, I think he was the chief of the fire department for a while, he's now working for the Columbus Fire Department, and his brother works for the Beaver Creek Township Fire Department. So I think during the battle of the badges or for the blood drive, maybe the two brothers can go head to head, so that would be something. I attended the ribbon cutting for the new Dunkin' Donuts up on North Fairfield, and also the new Warehouse Four, and we have a lot of choices for coffee in Beaver Creek now. Was also able to attend a retirement ceremony for the Beaver Creek Township Fire Chief, David Vandennboss. He served 34 years with the department. He actually started his career as a volunteer, and he was the longest tenured chief when he retired. He was number 10 of the department, and he served for 16 years as a chief. I was also able to present a proclamation to the Beaver Creek Women's League for all the work they do here in Beaver Creek. They've donated well over $376,000 to young ladies from Beaver Creek High School, going on to college, women in transition, and also a lot of other activities that they do around the community. They do a lot of really good work out there. As Vice Mayor Bales said, we attended the dual ribbon cutting, or the ribbon cutting for the Dual Brand Hotel, and I spent a lot of time in Marriott Hotels when I was traveling, and I never saw one with a golf simulator in it. Makes me want to go back on the road and see if I can find some more. I spent the weekend at the Popcorn Festival, most of the day Saturday and most of the day Sunday, had an opportunity to be a judge at the car show, and it was really great to see everyone out there, it was really nice to see the weather. The weather could not have been better, and for those of us, I know, Sarah, you sat out there that whole weekend too, and Ed, you were out there the whole weekend. It's a good thing that it was nice, because you get to that 90 degrees, it's a little bad. I was able to attend the dedication for the new Bethel Christian Church on Grange Hall, that was an interesting time, I did that yesterday morning, and I think that's all I have, so I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a few announcements. Plan Beaver Creek Open House, that is this week, well, September 16th, next Tuesday, week from tomorrow, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Laffino Plaza Meeting Room, they're in part of the senior center there. The city is hosting the open house for Plan Beaver Creek Comprehensive Update to the city's land use plan, zoning code, and property maintenance. So attendees will have the opportunity to review and share feedback on the draft and the city's future and land use map. Residents who are unable to attend can share your input through the Engage tab at planbeavercreek.com, and we encourage you can make comments there at any time. As Vice Mayor Bales mentioned earlier, community conversations with city council is Thursday, September 18th, 6:00 to 8:00. That is, the location was going to be at the new Pizza Dive, but it's going to be at the old Pizza Dive, they're on Dayton, Xenia, Steady and True, at the old Pizza Dive. So join city council members, ask questions, share ideas, and learn more, everyone is welcome to attend. Parks Department, this is a popular thing, this is one of the things that changed due to COVID, and we've never looked back because it was successful. Sometimes change is good. Used to fishing derby was one Saturday, and that was it. Now the fishing derby goes from September 18th through September 25th at Laffino Park. We ask you that you send your picture of the child and the fish that they caught by September 26th to parks@beavercreekohio.gov, and entries must include the child's name, age, parent's name, address, phone number, and date you went fishing at the park. Submissions will then be entered into a drawing, and prizes such as games, toys, kids' fishing gear, and tickets to local attractions. So fishing is catch and release only, fishing licenses are not required for children under the age of 16, and this is a very popular event, and they really have a lot of fun. Parents too, it's kind of, especially the mothers, whether or not they want to touch a fish, but we won't go there.
Get hooked on it.
Yeah, get hooked on it, there you go. Tri Truck is coming fast upon us, October 4th, mark your calendars, Saturday, October 4th, bright and early, 10 a.m. to 1 p.m. at our municipal maintenance facility there on Orchard Lane. Enjoy a variety of the trucks and vehicles, including snowplows, fire trucks, police cruisers, front-end loaders, and more. Beaver Creek Township Fire Department, at the same time, just up the hill a little bit, will host their open house, so it's a joint event that we host here. It's free and open to the public, and we have, sometimes I think we still probably will have Bounce House and some other activities for younger kids that really train rides usually. Watch them say they don't have it, and I announce it, I guess we have to now. So they have a lot of fun, the kids have a lot of fun that day, the kids, boys, especially boys, but girls do the same thing, they light up when they see those big trucks. And that's all I have tonight, thank you.
I will add to that, on the Tri Truck, they have a sensory hour, that first hour for kids that...
Right, yes, no horn blowing for that first hour.
Thank you very much. Now time for citizen comments, any, address counsel on any subject, come forward, state your name and address, you have three minutes.
Once again, Bob Trout, 2187 Bassett Court. And I heard something today that bothers me, that the TIF has identified itself as being road construction at the dollar amount of approximately $15 million. Then I heard an individual say, we might use it for certain areas and possibly use it for other infrastructure. That bothers me more than you can imagine, that you are playing a bait-and-switch event with the residents, regardless, that's with the city. If you state you're going to use the money for something, that's what you're expected to use it on. And the other thing that I want to tell you is, I think all of you are going to be gone, voted out eventually, you know, over a period of time, that this TIF is going to be in place, and we need to ensure that there is specific guidance for the follow-on city council and everything else as to exactly what that money is in, because if it goes into a kitty or anything else like that, it needs to be specified what it goes for. The other thing is, I have a very good level of program management expertise, program management, projects, engineering reviews, things of that nature, and I am going to be on everything that deals with this particular TIF for as long as I'm alive and it's going on. So I just want you to know, I am going to request records or anything else so that we have an accountability, there is going to be a paper trail on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Come forward, state your name and address.
4128 Nettleton Point, Beaver Creek. This is a nice one, this has nothing to do with that, I'll save all my other stuff, but I am a big fan of the Popcorn Festival. This is my third year as a vendor there, I like it, I think it's catchy, Colonel Bob, Colonel John, whatever, I think it was a nice fair. The only sad thing was, is though, as I was leaving, packing up on Sunday, a lot of the other vendors around me were kind of complaining about, is there a price range? I didn't see anything about that. Are you guys, is the price going to increase for vendors? Do you know offhand? I mean, that's...
That's up to the Popcorn Festival, we don't run that.
So...
It's not a city project.
Oh, it isn't?
No.
Oh, okay, I thought you said like, I thought you guys are in the council or whatever.
Well, we served there, but it's not a...
Okay, but anyway, that's a nice activity, I think it's done very well, and like I said, I was grateful it didn't rain, it was a good turnout. So anyway, you know, I give credit where credit's due, so you know, I'm not all negative there, but anyway, take care.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Mr. Bales, I do accept your offer for discussion. Thank you.
What? Discussion. Anyone else? Seeing none, I will close the public portion. Mr. Curran?
Move to adjourn, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.